I think we're closing.
It's about on the nose.
Oh, I know.
Oh, I think we got another minute. Think one more.
One more round. Yeah, one more round. It's crazy.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah.
One more? One more. Calm before the storm.
Calm before the storm.
That's what Kelly just said.
Well, did you?
Yeah. Or my stomach will growl. One of the two. Always happens in church when it's the quietest. And so I was kind of my stomach will growl. Why is that always?
Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P M. on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Time for our second regular meeting of this month. At this time, Mr. Schultz will offer an invocation and Mr. Hawk will lead us in the pledge. Everyone please stand, please.
Bow your heads. Lord, thank you for letting us gather here tonight. Give us the strength, the stability, the persistence, the ability to make the right decisions for the citizens in the City of Washington Courthouse. Keep us all safe and in good health. Thank you for being there and thank you for listening to us. Thank you for everything, and in your name, amen.
Please join me in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, please.
Schultz?
Here.
Blair?
Here.
Call?
Here.
Christman?
Here.
Hawk?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
We have the regular council meeting minutes from March the twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Anybody see anything that needed to be changed or corrected, added, subtracted, whatever?
Well, I didn't, but. I didn't. Then I'll move that we accept these minutes as printed.
I'll second.
Kido. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
By the way, I had to mention during roll call, Mr. Blair, we're glad you could make it this evening.
Thanks to my Uber driver.
Okay, well, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I was gonna tell him he could sit down there like we did during COVID and we'd still take a vote.
That was funny.
He got up here, so that's good. Uh, any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
We have one council committee to hear a report on. That's Service Safety and Recreation, and that must mean Mr. Hawk.
He always gets the long ones.
Go ahead, Mr. Hawk.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, March twelfth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty P M. Ted Hawk resided and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member; Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member; Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member; Mr. Steve Schultz, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson; Mr. Gary Dean, service director; Mr. Jody Langley, assistant park chief; Mr. Jeff Fenary, police chief; Mr. Mark Pitstick, city attorney; and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. The committee benefited from a report by the fire department. Mr. Langley noted that the newest hire was currently taking E M T classes at the Grant Medical Center. Assistant Chief Langley noted that mutual aid had been given to Highland County for the recent field to fars. Assistant Chief Langley advised that Valera was hosting a farm and tractor fire training at the Mayhend Building for local farmers and fire departments. Chief Fenary addressed the com- the committee and noted a successful search warrant related to drug matters. Chief Fenary noted that Mr. Nick Wilson was doing well at the Ohio State Patrol Academy. Chief Fenary noted that the police department, along with the Ohio State Patrol, would be conducting criminal interdiction, diction, diction, and traffic enforcement throughout the city starting on March seventeenth. Chief Fenary noted that the police department, Fayette County Sheriff, E M A, and the Department of Public Safety would be conducting an active shooter training seminar at Miami Trace High School on March twentieth. The committee benefited from a report on the status of various service projects within the community. The committee noted the administration received a bid from Cox Paving not to exceed three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred and sixteen point four oh for the street and alley paving program. The administration noted that salt was being received from ODOT for the year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Gary Dean advised that the service department had begun hauling dirt for lawn restoration work throughout the city. The administration advised the committee that pedestrian ramps have been improved to be A D A compliant on Marcus Street and Clinton Avenue. The administration noted that a sewer line had been repaired and that a new catch basin has been placed on Marcus Street. The administration noted the removal of the island and tree in the center of the cul-de-sac on Holly Drive. The committee noted that the water department had completed the valve exercises concerning the water system. The administration noted that playground equipment inspections had been completed. The committee recommended that the administration proceed with the purchase of mulch for the parks. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawk, chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Thanks, Mr. Hawk. Any questions, comments? Does someone want to make a motion to accept that report?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Abstain.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Mr. Denon, you are up to bat, sir.
Thank you.
I think baseball season starts tomorrow. You're up to bat, Mr. Denon.
I'm never a very good baseball player. Required skill and coordination, which worked out real well. The joint operations between the police department and the highway patrol were very successful. Police worked incredibly well with the patrol officers and really that is something that we would be happy to do again at any time, and the conduct of the patrol in town was exceptionally professional. On a small note, it's just nice to note these things. The Altrusa Club and the Y M C A, they did one of those little libraries out there, which I think is, it's just a nice thing. And it's a way that you have a, oh, a local club like Altrusa engage in the community, and it's those things that I think that we need to be incredibly proud of. We talked earlier in committee that the plans of the gas company and our paving plans, we got a little bit of a challenge there. We might have to rearrange some of the paving tonnage so that we don't pave the street and a couple of months later they come back and run right over it and tear it all up. Historically, they've always been pretty good about working with us. We're gonna sit down and talk with them about how we arrived at the current conflict so that we avoid that in the future and we don't have to do this shuffling about at the last minute. And also, I wanted to note in the council meeting, we talked about it a little bit in committee, the P U C O now doesn't let the gas company have basically dormant services for, for, it's a relatively short period of time. And a lot of those holes that you see around town where they dug up and they got a plate over them, that's where the gas company has gone and they have removed a dormant service. Now, what I like about that is more than one occasion now, I, I've seen them take a service out and a couple of months later put it right back in, which is a colossal waste of time, resources, and is an inconvenience to the public. You'll also see us in the near future working with the railroad for the rail crossings on South Fayette Street and South Main Street. We'll be improving those ahead of paving, so then we will pave up to those, so that should end up with a, a relatively smooth crossing. That's the, the goal at the end of the project. Now, it's not quite as in-depth as we did on Court Street, 'cause that rail crossing on Court Street is, is really, that's the most solidly built rail crossing I've ever seen in my life. And for the price tag of it, it ought to be, although four hundred and eighty thousand dollars and our portion of that was about sixty-seven, 'cause that's those concrete structure below it and that ought to last hopefully for a very long time, but it carries a tremendous amount of traffic up there. Committee report noted that Cox Paving was the successful bidder for the municipal paving program in the sum of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars and a bit of change. Remember, in this case, it's Cox Paving, which means it's Jurgensen, and it's not the Cox Paving that is now Fillmore, because, you know, we've rearranged to make everything a bit confusing. But that would have been, when Jurgensen bought Cox Paving eventually, then you had, oh, Fred Cox moved over to Fillmore, and that's how we get a little bit confused sometimes.
Could you explain that?
We can do that, but, you know. Everybody's favorite activity in the spring, we will start hydrant flushing, which is an exciting time. We do that for water quality to help maintain that. Occasionally, though, it does result in a little bit of rusty water, the usual issue for residents, in which case if they let that run for just a little bit, that will cycle out of the system and they'll be perfectly fine. It's not, per se, dangerous, but if they have any health or safety concerns, we will be happy to go out and visit them and take a look. But that is to maintain water quality. It also actually, you know, it's nice to know that the hydrant works, 'cause it's not something, when you need it, that you really have time to repair. So we'll be doing a lot of hydrant flushing and cleaning out the system, and that with the longevity of the system helps out tremendously. A lot of communities just don't do that anymore. It's not a very good idea to skip that. That and the program where we go through and we operate the valves in the system make dealing with issues in the water system tremendously easier, which, those are all issues that I know that you had a burning passion about. There are things that, you know, some things that interest me and everybody else are a little bit different. We've gone through the testing process and it will, civil service will take a look at those results for the assistant chief chess, and, you know, that process is something that, you know, as you prepare for transitions over time, although we don't really want Jody to go anywhere, that is something that you do to be ready. We will have an opening in street and we will have an opening at the wastewater treatment plant lab, which if you have a wastewater license, is an excellent job that you might wanna think about, because the lab of wastewater, that's, that's a lot of fun out there. Any questions tonight?
You spent the day doing some insurance and you like those things too. I don't know what's wrong with you, but anyway.
Health insurance is always, it's always great fun.
Yeah, right. The last several years, I've had the chance to announce the, what do they call it, guns and hoses game between the Fayette County Dragons and some of our police officers and firefighters. And I gotta say, our police officers and firefighters always lose.
Yes, we will.
Now, Jody, we gotta practice more.
Those guys are good.
No, seriously, that is such a neat thing for those young people and to get to play against some of the police officers and firefighters.
They have a lot of fun with that.
They do, and it's fun and it's neat and I really appreciate the guys going over there and doing that. It's neat. It's a neat thing.
Oh, one other thing before I forgot. Butch Deskins. Oh, extremely skilled mason has done that, probably longer than I've been alive. Was, with him and Chad out at the cemetery, if you're headed out of town and you turn in the first driveway at the cemetery, not very far into it, you'll encounter kind of a, where one section comes to, to a point and you can choose to go left or right. We're gonna take out the little crabapple tree that's there that, quite honestly, is, it's seen its better days. It doesn't have a whole lot left to, to give. And we'll take out some of those landscaping blocks, and Mr. Deskins has a very nice monument that with his materials and labor, he will erect that I think that we will all be very proud of. Now, if any artistic endeavor, there'll be a variety of opinions, but I think that we'll all be very proud.
Very good. Any questions or comments for Mr. Denon? Uh, Mr. Sockman, again, Mr. Sockman presents to us the very elaborate report earlier, but if you wanted to kind of summarize some things, that'd be good.
Well, it's hard to weigh right into the first quarter already, but compared to last year, in pretty good shape. I'd still label us as stable, which is good. I certainly think with the, continued with the controlled spending over the next couple of years, I think we'll, we'll find those fruits of that labor there. But overall, compared to last year and where we're at, I'm, I'm pretty happy and satisfied. I think we're in pretty good shape. With the Fed's leaving rates on, that's certainly gonna help those investments, and we'll continue to monitor those and figure out the best ways to utilize that money for the return investment for the city and the citizens, so. But overall, in pretty good shape.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Sockman? And Mr. Pitstick, do you have anything this evening, sir?
Just briefly, I would just like to remind everybody, I'm always amazed at how much trash, old tires and old vehicles accumulate over a winter. We have a mess, and we're gonna be placarding the properties, and if the owners do not clean it up, we're going to be going out and pulling away and assessing their property taxes. We also have the ability to file criminal charges, which in some cases we will do, which is misdemeanors of the fourth degree, which carries up to thirty days in jail. We, we don't ordinarily do that. We just want them to clean up their properties. But again, it's amazing how much trash people accumulate and fill it through the way. So that's why we are shut off for the next nine days.
They need to get into mowing. Thank you, Mr. Pitstick. We have no local residents or taxpayers signed up to speak, so we will move on to legislation previously introduced.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we get into the first ordinance, which I believe is the, is the tax ordinance, what I would ask council to do is to dis table this until we can get the other resolution prepared and sent down to the Board of Elections.
So ordinance number three?
Yes.
Okay. Would someone like to make?
I'll make a motion to table it.
I'll second.
Okay, I guess we need a roll call to table.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
So let me get this clear. You have to make a new resolution?
No, we're not. We're not going to make a new resolution. This is an ordinance. What happens is the resolution has to be passed in order to go down and, and ask the Board of Elections to put the increase in the income tax on the ballot.
Which is our second reading?
Which is, which is the second reading for the resolution. The ordinance actually happens after the, if, if the, if the citizens agree and they pass the, the tax, then we wanna pass the ordinance. But I wanna make sure we have one reading on the ordinance so everyone understands this is what we're actually going to pass at, if, at the end of the election, that they pass the or- the res- the ordinance itself, the increase in the income tax. Did I make myself?
So when do we act on the second and third reading?
We'll do that later on in the year.
Before the election?
No, after the election.
After the election?
Because we can't pass this unless it's, unless the citizens pass the increase in the income tax. Now, we could do it, but it doesn't look very good that we, we pass an ordinance saying something happens when it hasn't, when it hasn't happened. See what I'm saying?
So why did we put this out ahead of time?
Because we wanted to put it on first reading. We wanted to make sure that everyone knew what it was we're actually going to pass after.
The election.
Just to have that discussion.
The election.
Yeah, it's for discussion purposes to make sure everybody understands what we're doing.
I think you said that in one of the meetings we were in, that you wanted to put it out, to get it out here early.
I want everybody to understand what's going on and that we're not trying to.
And I think there's something, an article in the paper, which said something to that effect.
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Can I ask a question real quick? Am I allowed?
I'll allow it. I g- I think the answer is no, but I'll allow it.
I don't have to. That's fine. I can wait.
Okay. Uh, we're voting to table, so Kelly, roll call.
Okay. Um, we were at Blair and Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Okay, now that we're not in the middle, middle of the motion, if you wanna ask a question, go ahead.
Is that all right?
Yes.
My question was just for the trash pickup. Does the city have a, like, um, a spring cleanup day? Where they allow citizens to put trash out and the city helps them pick them up? Where they may not have access to trucks to get it to the dump or you have elderly that can't make it to the dump?
No.
No.
Now, we do pick up brush. And, oh, there's a policy when we start and stop, but basically we do it year-round now. Because if you, I'm amazed at the amount of brush that we've chipped over the years that there is a tree or shrub left. 'Cause I would have thought we all would have reduced that to wood chips by now.
Well, the wind keeps reducing them on the golf course, I don't know.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Resolution number R sixteen, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I'm going to put resolution R sixteen, twenty twenty-five on second reading.
Second.
Discussion.
And I think the language on here, if it makes sense for ordinance three, it technically isn't the question of approving the passage of an ordinance. It's the question of approving an ordinance, not the passage of an ordinance, 'cause we have not yet passed an ordinance.
Right. No.
Okay, yeah. So maybe that language needs to be clarified in resolution R sixteen. I don't know, but I think that's the intent of it, is that it's not supposed to be approving the passage, approving the passage of an ordinance that we have not yet passed. It's the question of approving an ordinance in general. The question is up to the electors.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's the purpose of, of putting, disabling the, uh, the ordinance itself, because the question of whether or not to pass the ordinance comes down to whether or not the tax passes. Yeah. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second, so roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R sixteen dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution declaring the necessity of an election on the question of approving the passage of an ordinance to amend section one ten point zero one of the codified ordinances of the City of Washington Courthouse, Ohio, in order to increase the income tax rate by two tenths percent beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-six, and continuing for a period of ten years for the purpose of capital improvements being parks, streets, alleys, bike paths, and maintenance of buildings and infrastructure.
And for adoption.
I'll second.
Either one, Kelly. And roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
New legislation, we have one. Resolution number R seventeen, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'm going to put resolution R seventeen, twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. You wanting to explain again Cox Paving? No, you don't.
It's on first. Go back to first.
We can do that.
Uh, roll call, please.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R seventeen dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the city manager, Joseph J. Denon, of the City of Washington Courthouse to award a contract to Cox Paving LLC for the two thousand and twenty-five street and alley paving program.
Okay, Mr. Christman, do you have anything this evening?
Well, I would just like to thank everybody for coming, and I'd like to see the end before they run out of here. Anyway, no, that's not all I have. I'd like to see everybody here, be nice to everybody. That's why I'm so excited to be here. I'm gonna get me defused. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Hawk?
I don't have anything.
No.
Nothing.
Mrs. Chris is a dull night. Mrs. Call?
Tell me, look. You're dangerous.
Mrs. Call, do you have anything?
I don't have anything super, super exciting, but I did wanted to share that April is Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. So that's coming up right around the corner, and that's kind of near and dear to my heart. I've got a little guy at home who celebrates every day, not just the month of April, so that's pretty cool. But just, just kind of celebrating all of the things that our community has done and has offered for kiddos and adults who are on the autism spectrum. And I know a lot of the guys you talked about, how they play against the police and fire department. I know a lot of those guys, so that's kind of cool. They're the adult side of where I work. I work with the little. Yeah, pretty cool stuff.
They take it very serious.
They really do. They're pretty good, too.
They are.
Yeah, they do.
Mr. Schultz, what do you have this evening?
Well, you know, we had a conversation earlier about the downtown and the city itself, and I think it's extremely exciting what the city is doing. If we keep at this pace and we all think in the direction we've been thinking about revitalizing the town, the cleaning up the town, making it look better, and over the next five or six years, you're gonna see a big change in our downtown, 'cause we all are in the same mindset of fixing up the buildings downtown, getting them up and running, and maybe making some different improvements, and have more apartments downtown, which is what we're all looking forward to. And that's something that's been going on for years. The thinking has been going on for thirty, thirty-five years, and now it's coming to light, and we're all gonna see that in the near future, I'm sure. And one thing I've learned since I've gotten older, that time management, we all know what time management is. Manage your time. It's not watching the clock. It's managing the time that we have. So that's something you gotta keep in mind. Do the best in the time you have. So that's all I got, but it is exciting what's gonna be happening in and around Washington Courthouse over the next few years, and I'm, I'm glad to be part of it. Thank you.
Mr. Blair?
Uh, yes, sir. I've used my time to give an update from the Vitality Downtown Committee to the rest of council and also the citizens. Speaking of the golf, somebody mentioned the golf course earlier. Today, when I was walking my dog through the golf course, I saw that coyote right across there that somebody took a picture of and put it on Facebook. So the critters are out there running wild, but.
Was he golfing?
I was too busy training my dog to get him out. So if you'll allow me the time to give an update here. My voice is still a little bit long from my surgery when they, you know, stick the old tube down your throat, but here we go. Have you driven through our downtown recently? From the corner of Court and Main, the future home of vinyl coffee, down the block where Chris Pagely is doing his upgrades, to the end of the block where Mr. Johnson has his office and where Mr. Graham is working on upstairs apartments, the downtown is finally seeing long-awaited activity. A special interest currently is the exterior interior upgrades Mr. Moody is doing to his building. And if you would like to know what his plans are, you may go to my Facebook page, JimBlairWCH, City Council, and review Branson's latest video post where he will give you an update. The increased activity downtown coincides with the renewed optimism of additional potential city and county growth, which may be happening soon as the new federal focus on bringing businesses back to the USA is already showing fruit. Hopefully, we can ride this wave of growth. A new item of particular interest is the creation of a bi-monthly downtown newsletter, making our community aware of downtown events and activities. The first issue of the downtown newsletter should be hitting the press soon. This issue will focus on the new group twenty-two business slated to open within a few months. This publication will initially be distributed to downtown businesses and put on the city website. A special thanks to Mrs. Gail Allen for spearheading this effort. She's doing it not as part of the paper job, but as a concern involved citizen. We thank you, Gail. While we have not gotten our final recommendation from Small Nation, we are not sitting still. Negotiations are currently ongoing between city administration, potential investors, and building owners on the focused Court Street downtown revitalization area as to occupancy options. The delay with Small Nation is they are waiting on the city to finish the legal work on moving the old Bourbon and Barrel Building into the jurisdiction of the CIC and thus free it up for disposal before they can give us a definitive plan of action. I have contacted our legal department, but have not received a definite answer yet as to when this will be accomplished. The downtown vacant building ordinance is still being reviewed by city administration and a final draft to council has not yet been presented. This ordinance must be put in place before we can resolve the first state building issue, which we know has been ongoing for seven years, along with other prolonged vacancies. And then finally, on a side note, I have been approached by several citizens asking about the recommendations made in our year-end report, one of which is obtaining the services of a grant writer. It is pretty clear that the task force recommended to council and city administration that this option be pursued in our year-end report. As of tonight, I have not received any communication as to whether this recommendation is being considered. Only a casual statement made at a previous council meeting suggested they were looking to hiring a thorough amount of Columbus. I requested the name of this firm and did not receive a response. Friends, the task force in itself has no authority to move on items. Our only purpose is to make recommendations and pass those on to city council and city administration, which we have faithfully done. We will not be continuing to bring up items that have already been recommended. Finally, the task force will continue to observe and make recommendations to council concerning the downtown going forward. We are currently looking to request that changes be made to the downtown signage ordinance to make it less restrictive and more appealing to business owners. Our newsletter will go a long ways in keeping the public mourned informed about our downtown. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very good.
Mr. Johnson, do you have anything?
Yeah. I guess first, Joe, do you know the name of that firm?
We've had a conversation with Hicks Partners and they are sending us a proposal.
Great. Hicks Partners.
Hicks Partners, it's good to know.
Hicks Partners. Questions and answers. Now, I was just wanting to briefly build off of what Mr. Schultz and Mr. Blair were saying. You know, it's, it's two sides of the same coin. A lot of the workings of the city are not something that happened overnight, unfortunately, to many people. There's a lot of, I like to think of it as kinetic energy. You know, there's that point where the, if you throw a ball up in the air, where it just doesn't move and that I think is what a lot of people see and feel, but you have to trust it will come back down. And so all the work that we put in, we throw it into the air and then the results come back to us. And we've been doing a lot of that, so I'm very proud of the work that we've been, been doing and putting into it and there are, there are a lot of, of small steps that have been made where if we look behind us, we, we see progress. Maybe not by each step, we might not see those, what we would call progress, but whenever we look behind us and we see how far we've come truly, I, I think we are in a better place today than where we were before I got on council, before many of you got on council. A lot of people in this room wish me a happy birthday, so I would like to thank them. I turned thirty-two this past Saturday and so I've been on council for eight years, so that means a quarter of my life I've been sitting up here with you guys. So thank you.
Okay. I have nothing. Does someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. As soon as I get my calculator, I'll figure percentages that I'm at. Eighty-two years of being here thirty, so. You'll probably catch me, but I won't be around to see it.
Roll call, please.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Call?
Yes.
Chrisman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. We are adjourned.